What we're gonna do tonight, we're gonna recognize you and stuff and hopefully maybe one day you'll be sitting in these seats up here.
I'll be retired though. You'll be in the grave. I had to roll that in.
Rusty and Dwayne. You know Rusty, I can tell when I'm getting old. When I look over here and I see David, I see Jody sitting back there in the back. Well, Bill's sitting over here. Are you ready to go? Okay. You ready? You ready? Call this county commission meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for a prayer by Mr. Rusty Ork and a prayer by Mr. Robert Higginbotham.
Let's all pray. Dear heavenly father, thank you for this great evening, the blessing of your life, Lord. And thank you for all that you do for us, dear heavenly father. Walk with us this evening, dear heavenly father. Talk with us throughout the week, dear heavenly Jesus. Give us the knowledge and the understanding to make the best decisions tonight for our county. Bless our citizens, bless our children, dear heavenly father. Bless our heavenly father, our first responders, our soldiers who sit in, dear heavenly father. Heavenly father, bless each and every one. Thank you for all that you do in our life, but most of all, Lord, for the plan of salvation. Amen.
Amen. Let's all remain standing for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Roll call, please. Vote. Can you go ahead and, can you sit the... Guys, go ahead and vote. No. There we go. Okay. Here. 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 Yeah, whip. Whip. I'd like to state that we do have a quorum. Our first order of business is to recognize our elementary school champions for this year in the small and large division. At this time, Mr. Ralph Davis, Mr. Tom King, would you guys move to the front, please? I think you have some qualifications for the White Oak and Jellicoe. Coach, would you go ahead and come on up too, please?
Yeah, we gotta have you up here.
Whereas the 2021 White Oak Lady Wildcats basketball team consisted of Taylor Marlowe, Taylor Lane, Mackenzie Marlowe, Madison Terry, Kingsley Terry, Harmon Dell, Lydia Bocher, Madison Ball, Anotta Hall, Abby Rutherford, Kylie Evans. Whereas the Lady Wildcats went to the Campbell County Elementary Basketball Tournament as the 2021 tournament winners with a 6-0 season. They won the first round to advance to championship game and the Lady Wildcats prevailed with great effort to be the 2021 Campbell County Small Division Championship winners. One player, Kingsley Terry, was awarded all county. Taylor Marlowe was awarded all tournaments and Taylor Lane was awarded MVP. The Lady Wildcats were proudly supported by the student body, teachers, parents, administration, fans, coaches, and the whole White Oak community. Now, this is our total dedication and love for the game. This executive body proudly names today Tuesday, February 28th as the Lady Wildcats Unit to Win Today.
Great job, boys. Nice job. Coach, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I know I'm super proud of all of these girls. It takes a lot of effort on their part to show up every day, come to practice, and do what it takes to win those ballgames. So I'm super, super proud of all of them. They were super excited to win. And it's a little bit harder for smaller schools, I think, sometimes to have enough kids that are interested in playing. So the fact that we were able to put something together and did some things was the highlight probably of the year for us, especially at Campbell County. I'm very, very thankful for them and very thankful for the parents that show up to our game and provide opportunity for us to do this. Faithful to the Lord for the opportunity to get to do what I do every day.
Good job. Thank you.
Is anybody here with Jellicoe? The Jellicoe Elementary Boys Basketball Team consisted of Black Christian, Mason Ayers, Katoto Marlowe, George Buesen, Eli Lay, Bryson Ayers, Lincoln Wallace, Isaiah Atkins, Dalton Ratliff, Aiden O'Hara, Aiden Williams, Caleb Watson, Roland McNeely, Noah Rutherford, and was coached by Gabe Hostow. The Wood Devils went to the Campbell County Elementary Basketball Tournament as the 2021 tournament winners with a 6-0 season, won the first round to advance to championship game, and with great effort, the 2021 Small School Division Champion winners was the Jellicoe Wood Devils.
I want to tell them why they're not here.
Jellicoe could make it or not because Jellicoe High School has a basketball game and it's a championship game, so that's why they couldn't be here.
I think these people from White Oak are wanting to head that away too, so thank you. Okay, Rusty, Dwayne, you gonna do the girls or boys first?
What does the girl have to say?
Would the Jacksons Elementary Girls, please, come up with the coaches, please?
Same, let's see.
And I'm John Young, through all the commission, I've seen here for quite a few years, and this is one of the best things I just know. We try to keep the field safe, some young children, we try to do what they've done in the county, and sometimes we get criticized about it, that's okay. But this is one of the best things that I've done since I've been on county commission, including propelleration and order on children, because that's our future. But saying all that, I'll try to read this, and if I get played out, then I apologize. This is Campbell County County Board of Commissioners and the Jacksons Elementary School Girls' Basketball Team. Whereas the Lady Eagles Basketball Team of Jacksons Elementary is coached by Aaron Brown and John Philpott. And whereas Jacksons Lady Eagles Team members include fifth graders Alexi York, Eddie Albright, Brooklyn Ruffer, Julie Lawson, Story Kaderman, Chloe Johnson. Fourth graders include Mason Katmaker, Kylie Urquhart. Third graders include Morgan Richardson, Lisa Frader, Alyssa Greenwood. And whereas the Lady Eagles dominated their third straight undefeated season with a record of 8-0, wow! Won into the county tournament with overall a 28-0 for the last three years. And whereas they opened the tournament play with a win against Lady Cardinals of Carroll in hand, whereas bringing the victory in their final game of 41-14 against the softball Lady Alice, awarded the team, awarded this team as the 2021 Campbell County Girls' League Girls' Large Division Champions. And whereas the Lady Eagles were supported by the student body, the teachers, the parents, administrator, fans, and the Jacksons Elementary community. And now therefore, due to their total dedication and love for the game, this executive body proudly names Thursday, February 24th, 2022, Jacksons Elementary Lady Eagles, Refused to Lose Day. We want to thank you all.
We couldn't be more proud of these girls, both as players and as students, and it's honestly a testament to the parents and the family and what you guys have done and bring the torch, wonderful young women, so thank you all.
You're welcome. Johnny, over here.
Erz, I appreciate you, the commission does, and it takes all your time, I praise the boys, and I know exactly why, and it's time consuming, but you'll never go wrong as long as you keep them happy and stuff.
Okay, would the Jacksons Elementary Boys Team, please, come up? Coaches? Hey, John, while the boys are coming up, the girls going back through that, said, hey, he didn't have anything to say, it's the first time he's ever had a word, John.
All right, so this is kind of a good thing for me, going to school at Jacksons Elementary, signing to school at Jacksons Elementary, and I think that's always good to see the Eagles on top, so. So whereas the Eagles Basketball Team of Jacksons Elementary is coached by Aaron Brown and John Philpott. And whereas Jacksons Elementary School Eagles Team members include fifth graders Jack Sexton, Jackson No, Skylar Wallace, Kingston Evans, Jesse Chapman, Bailey Bernard, and David Smith. Fourth graders include Kenan Pedley, Jordan Slayback, and Braxton Kendry. Along third grader is Max Sexton. And whereas the Eagles played outstanding in their 7-1 season going into county tournament. And whereas the Jacksons Eagles brought victory in their final game, they come behind the score of 43-36 against Cardinals of Carroll, which awarded this team as the 2021 Campbell County Boys Large Division Champions. And whereas the Lady Eagles were supported by their student body, teachers, parents, administration, fans, and the Jacksons community. And now therefore, due to their total dedication and love of the game, this executive body proudly names Friday, February 25th, 2022, the Jacksons Elementary Eagles All In For The Win Day.
Coach, you got the floor.
I'm just as proud of this team as we are of girls. There's a lot of hard work that went into the girls and boys team, so, you know, a lot of practices, hard practices, and a lot of just times where they've had to really just struggle through some things, you know, going to school every day and playing as well, and it's not easy, and we know that. So we're very proud of them, and once again, a testament to the parents and the families. We thank you all, and the opportunity to be able to do this, and thank you all, and I just speak.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for working hard for White Oak and Jacksons Elementary. Mr. Brownhouse, every time expectations shine in the classroom and on the ball court, and you couldn't have for better effort all the way around. And so it's just, it's not just now, it didn't stop if all season's over, we're still working hard, you know, and we will to the last day we have them. And so we thank you guys, thank you all.
Folks, I'll give you an opportunity to go ahead and believe in your good lives, which I mean that.
I'd like to go with John. Hey, guys, don't give my card.
Guys, hey, great job by all of you. I'm gonna tell you something, hey, listen, if that don't put a warm spot in your heart, nothing will. I'm telling you, that's just fantastic. Before we get started, I will be recessing this meeting until March the 7th at 6:00 PM, and the reason why, I'm going to let the communications committee bring up, it's dealing with Comcast, a letter and everything for Comcast, so we'll, we'll be recessing until then, so please do not let me make the mistake of saying we adjourn, okay? Okay, moving on down. Approval of previous minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the previous minute.
Motion by Davis. Any discussion? Go try it again, this, uh...
I'm trying.
Yes, ma'am. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. Approval of previous minutes has passed commission. Moving on down, we have no republic application approval with the revised section.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Nance.
Seconded, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Kids. Vote, please. We'll try it again. There we go. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. No republic applications approval with the revised edition has passed commission. Moving on down. Committee reports in minutes, budget and finance, recreation, sanitation, building and grounds, communications, FMS revised, infrastructure, sanitation, insertion personnel.
So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion by Kids, so have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Higginbotham. Any discussion? Seeing none. Go try it again. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. Committee reports in minutes have passed commission. Moving on down. Approval of budget amendments and other funding resolutions?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve budget resolutions 2-1 through 2-13.
I have a motion to approve budget resolutions 2-1 through 2-13, seconded by Davis. Any discussion? Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. Budget amendments 2-1 through 2-13 have passed commission. We also have one that was sent out to us, it's budget resolution 2-14. It's dealing with sanitation in the third district. I'll entertain the motion from the third district.
Motion by...
Motion to approve resolution number 2-14.
Okay, chairman.
I think we have to suspend the rules.
I'm sorry, that is correct.
I make a motion, suspend the rules, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion by Kids, suspend the rules, have a second. Seconded by Ork. You'll be voting on suspension. Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. Rules have been suspended. Okay, Dwayne, I'll entertain your motion.
I make a motion to approve resolution number 2-14.
Okay.
I'll second these motions, Mr. Chairman, are you gonna go over this real quick?
I will. Amanda, I can read it. There we go. Budget resolution number 2-14. Whereas the various capital outlet projects that have been ongoing in the solid waste sanitation fund since the beginning of the current 2021-22 year are nearing completion such that the previous authorized sites development projects at the Toe String Road Recycle and Convenience Center that includes shaping, grading, cultivating, and paving of the site can now be put out for bid. And whereas specifications have been developed detailing the scope of the site development project and a cost estimate has been formulated for the project and whereas 50% of the funding needed to provide for the essential cost or estimated cost of the site development project can be achieved through the realignment of existing appropriations and the other 50% can be provided from the reserve funds and whereas one will be, are hereby authorized to be solicited for the Toe String Road Recycling Convenience Center site development project upon approval of this budget amendment and now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Campbell County, Tennessee, assembled on this day, 22nd day of February 2022. If you look on the second page, it has the amount, the other constructions, and I think it's 125,000. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, and actually that money's been pulled out of funds that's not being utilized from, I think, assistant director positions and various odds and ends.
Very good. I hope everybody got a chance. Somebody, Mr. Chairman? Uh, we need to make, fast, Mr. Ford, I'll let you comment on that.
Yeah, I guess.
Go ahead.
This is something that, that actually the Eagles are all aware of, that in the third district, we have the biggest sanitation, and everything goes right back to Toe String, and it's wore out. And with all the construction's been going on, it needs to be fixed, and I hope you support it, but let me, let you understand something. Talking with Kelly McCarter, I think this is gonna be one of the first paving projects that's gonna take effect as soon as this mill's open, or their mill's open. So we need to try to get this approved, but let me, let me say something else, and the press may want to pick up on it, or the news media. I apologize for any problems that's occurred out there through this construction. I know it's been muddy, I know it's been, it's been kind of time consuming to get in, get rid of your garbage, but when we get this site finished, it'll actually be one of the better sites in East Tennessee. And that's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. You've had the resolution front of you, have the motion. It's by Baird, seconded by Ork. Want a comment?
Just real quick, it's a total 350,000 and 125,000.
Yes, that is correct. Mr. Kids?
And that's was the, with no tax increase, Mr. Chairman.
No tax increase, sir.
Good deal.
I know you'd like that one. All right, vote, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. We have thirteen yes. Budget resolution 2-14 has passed commission. So that takes care of all those. Moving on down. Approval for payment of the monthly travel credit card, which is zero balance for the mayors and for the county commissions, I think.
So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Kids, have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Goines. I think this will change after this week, next month, there'll be some there, so. Yes, ma'am. All right, you'll be voting on the travel credit card, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. The approval of the credit cards has passed. Moving on down. Reports from county officials in all departments, including Board of Education.
So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion by Kids, have a second. Seconded by Ork. Okay, any discussion? Seeing none. You're voting on reports from county officials in all departments, including Board of Education. Vote, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. Reports from county officials in all departments have passed commission. Moving on down. Reports from organizations receiving funding from the county.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ork?
I make a motion to approve the reports from organizations receiving funding from the county, and it looks like we only have one, Mr. Ork came in from Campbell County Historical Society.
Okay, thank you. You got a second? Seconded by Higginbotham. Okay. Reports from organizations receiving funding from the county. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. Reports from organizations receiving funding from the county has passed. The information is on page 121, I hope you all looked at that. Also, other matters, I think, Zach, this is on, gonna be on your part, correct? Rusty, I think it's gonna be on yours, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving on down. Mr. Ork, you're doing the resolution for the mayor, and Scotty, you're doing the one on the fire truck, right?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. Moving on down. All right, guys, we're over to the county commissioners. Since we're in reverse order, Mr. Ork, you'll get to go first tonight.
I'm just gonna say something else to say.
Yes, all right. I, Rusty Ork, county commissioner of the third district, hereby submit the following motions for consideration at the Campbell County Commission meeting on Tuesday, February 22nd of 2022. Motion one. Motion to approve letter of support from Highland Telephone Communications, Highland Communications for broadband expansion. Is that your motion, Mr. Ork? It is. Okay.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Have a second by Mr. Kids. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna have another one from Comcast also, they've requested this week, so I have to add that, but let me say, we've actually, they've requested letters from other departments, and we got various departments that they have that authority to do, and they will be sending those letters also.
Very good, thank you. Okay, we have a motion by Ork, seconded by Kids. You're voting on the letters of support to Highland Communications. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. That motion passes. The next one was from the Comcast, and we're gonna go ahead and, I'll move on down and let you do that for when you have your meeting, okay? But you want, you want to make the motion for...
Mr. Chairman, I think the way I feel about it, we'll go ahead and do the letter, but we're gonna actually come back, and there's a broadband community status that we're gonna bring up next week in my meetings.
Okay.
And we're gonna have to approve it, so we can send that along with them before the 15th. Now, keep it... Now, keep in mind, when we met at this meeting, both of these entities are going to apply for a large grant in the state. So the ones of you that are going to Nashville, I would hope that you'll take time out and speak to the appropriate people about whichever one they pick. It doesn't matter, I'm sure it don't matter to you all, if we can get one service in this county more than what we had, that's better off.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I also want this body to know also, with Highland Communications, my understanding, we've had a meeting with them, that there's, they're coming in this thing without any charge to the county, mostly with grants, from my understanding.
That's correct. Okay.
Do you want that motion, Mr.?
I'll entertain the motion to approve letters of support for Comcast for broadband expansion.
You have that motion, Mr.?
Have a motion, seconded by Davis. Vote, please. This is the letter of support for Comcast. Now, you'll be taking care of that in your committee.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. Very good. Moving on down there. Okay, Mr. Oark. I, Rusty Oark, County Commissioner of the Third District, hereby submit the following motions for consideration at the Campbell County Commission meeting on Tuesday, February the twenty-second, 2022. Motion to leave the COVID policy as is and to revise the end date from December thirty-first of 2021 to June thirtieth, 2022, as recommended from the Insurance and Personnel Committee sponsored by Bruce, seconded by Kitz, with a committee vote of five yays and zero nos.
That is my motion.
Mr. Chairman.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. You'll be voting on the leave policy to extend it. Vote, please. Scotty. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes.
Follow up, as you would let, Mr., we understand that we're doing not forty, we're doing eighty hours, from my understanding.
That's correct.
Good deal.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, it's staying the policy, just staying the meeting.
Yes, right. Okay, moving on. I, Rusty Oark, County Commissioner of the Third District, hereby submit the following motions for consideration at the Campbell County Commission meeting on Tuesday, February the twenty-second of 2022. Motion to approve that the Commissioner Chairman be designated to sign off on lease forms for the sanitation director, the maintenance director, and the veterans affair director and Commissioner's secretary, as recommended by the Insurance and Personnel Committee sponsored by Davis, seconded by Kitz, with a vote of five yays and zero nos. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Motion, seconded by Davis. Yes.
Have you had any lease forms brought to you yet?
I have not. Okay. Okay, be voting, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. Motion passes. Moving on down. I, Rusty Oark, County Commissioner of the Third District, hereby submit the following motions for considerations at the Campbell County Commission meeting on Tuesday, February the twenty-second of 2022. Motion to approve the interlocal government agreement for water line extension project. Is that your motion, sir?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
Oh, move, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Goines.
Mr. Chairman, and let me say, I appreciate Mr. Goines for all the work he's done, because these are shovel-ready projects that's been worked on for years.
Thank you, sir.
Follow up, I do appreciate Mr. Goines, forty-plus years for working on water in the first district and all of Campbell County. That is his best interest heart, and we appreciate you, Mr. Goines.
Whit, I think you're appreciated by all of us, buddy.
Yes, sir.
All right, you're voting, please.
Whit, you didn't even vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes.
I still commend him, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I, Rusty Oark, County Commissioner of the Third District, hereby submit the following motions for considerations at the Campbell County Commission meeting on Tuesday, February the twenty-second of 2022. Motion, resolution two, 2022 dash twenty-two dash oh two, to authorize application for the 2022 home grant from the Tennessee Housing Development Agency to provide housing rehabilitation for low-income persons and to allow Tennessee Community Assistance Corporation to administer funds on behalf of the county.
Second that motion.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I was seconded by Kitz.
And let me say, Mr. Bruce, if I may, as the maker of the motion, there's zero match, or from my understanding, we've done this improvement years. So it's a good plan.
Thanks, sir. Vote, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes.
I will add, Mr. Chairman, this also plan is going to be helping a lot of people that's less fortunate in Campbell County.
Very good. Okay, Mr. Marlowe, you have the floor. I, Zachry Marlowe, County Commissioner of the First District, hereby submit the following motions for consideration at the Campbell County Commission meeting on February the twenty-second of 2022. First motion. Motion to revise the county mileage reimbursement rate to parallel the rate established by the State of Tennessee and the IRS of fifty-eight point five cents per mile. Is that your motion?
Yes, and just to clarify, that is effective March first.
Becomes effective March first, okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Davis. Over here, raise his hand. Okay.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
No, we're going to move on. Okay, vote, please. No. Draft. Vote, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. Moving on down. Second motion. I, Zachry Marlowe, County Commissioner of the First District, hereby submit the following motions for consideration at the County Commission meeting on February the twenty-second of 2022. Motion to approve the final rule standard allowance for revenue loss option in the amount, is that seven million, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eight hundred and forty-one? Is that correct? Do you want?
Eight twenty-one.
It's seven million, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars.
Second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Mr. Kitz. Recommended from the Infrastructure Committee, as sponsored by Oark, seconded by Higginbottom. Okay, so it passed eight yays, zero nos, and two absent. Okay, is that your motion?
Yes.
I'd like somebody else to make the motion, some of these other people that hadn't had a chance. Have a second by Ms. Lester. There we go. I'll, okay, vote, please.
Discussion.
Any discussion?
No. Vote. Whit? Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. That passes the motion. There you go. All right, Zach, you have one more. I, Zach Marlowe, County Commissioner of the First District, hereby submit the following motions for considerations at the County Commission meeting on February the twenty-second of 2022. Motion to approve for the Board of Education and Campbell County CS dash TNTP slash service agreement, TDOE, Early Literature Network, dash FY twenty-two, dash final, one point two five point two two. Is that your motion, Mr. Marlowe?
Yes.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Goat Baird. Okay, no, vote, please.
On the board.
You can vote. Don't start. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. Zach, I think that takes care of you.
Yes.
Thank you. Very good. Mr. Kitz, you have one. I, Scotty Kitz, County Commissioner of the Second District, hereby submit the following motions for consideration at the Campbell County Commission meeting, February the twenty-second of 2022. Motion, resolution 2022 dash 2022, I'm sorry, dash twenty-two dash oh two, authorizing submission of a 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program application to fund a public health and safety equipment project as required, as requested by County E.L. Morton, and that's dealing with fire truck.
Rural, yeah, true.
Is that your motion?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second? Have a second by Davis. Vote, please. No. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. That passed there. I take care of Mr. Kitz. We're going down. Mr. King.
The resolution number on that is actually supposed to be 2022, twenty-two, oh two, A.
Okay, so should be an A there?
Should be an A there.
Okay. Okay, well, there wasn't one, we got. Okay. Do you have that?
Yes.
Make that, okay, thank you. Okay. I, Tyler King, County Commissioner of the Fifth District, hereby submit the following motions for consideration at the Campbell County Commission meeting on two twenty-two, 2022. Motion, approve proclamations for the White Oak Lady Wildcats and Jellico Blue Devils basketball team, small school champions. Is that your motion, sir?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Davis. Vote, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. Okay, Tyler, you got one more, I think. Okay, T one. Tyler, do you mind if I let Dwayne and Rusty do that?
Yeah.
Okay, this is a motion for the Jackspur, okay, on this. Motion to approve proclamations for Jackspur Eagles and Lady Eagles basketball team, large school. Do I have a mo, Dwayne, I think you made the motion. Rusty, you second it? Okay, vote, please. It's on discussion. No, they're not, is it? Ain't happening.
It's even discussion, Mr. Chairman.
No.
But you got to vote, and Rusty.
Rusty, vote. We had vote. All right, anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. That passes. Tyler, I think that took care of you, correct? Okay. Mr. Davis, you have several of them here. I, Ralph Davis, County Commissioner of the Fifth District, hereby submit the following motion for consideration at the Campbell County Commission meeting on February the twenty-second of 2022. Motion to approve the expediental digital property lease. Is that your motion, sir? Okay, do I have a second? Seconded by Tyler King. Okay, everybody had a copy of that and everything, so we're not, you can vote. Mr. Coker?
There's some things that need to be discussed. Mr. Chairman, the representative is here to answer some questions. The lease agreement that was sent to you to form here.
Yes.
Had some lights in, and there was some things that were wanting to be changed. I don't think there's any other that are that significant. If I might just hit some high points here.
Okay.
I assume that you all have had an opportunity to read what we have here. Been talking with Commissioner Davis about it, he's been talking with them. I made it clear to the company, you know, that I'm not a spokesman for Campbell County Government, I'm not here to negotiate with. We're just looking at the lease form, it doesn't say what you wanted it to say and what is that leave, that's my list. So we filled in here, I know that the rest is the landlord, so to back up, what they sent to us, this document that you would see is a, what's called, would be a standard type commercial triple net lease, which just means that they are responsible for all payments, taxes, insurance, all of that. Those provisions are covered here. If the landlord, we filled in on page one, will be Campbell County, the address will be five fifty-five Main Street, Post Office Box four eight three, or eight forty-three in Jackspur. The description of the leased premises, I sent you some documents here that showed the deed, the tax map, I think it's eleven point two, or something like that, on Crete Moore, Housley Drive, at the House Lebo, and it does not have a street number yet that would have to be assigned to by nine one one. I just met this gentleman here, and he's here to answer any questions that you have. On the base rent, fifteen hundred dollars a month, this will be instead payable per month, it will be paid in an advanced annual, eighteen thousand dollars per year, annually is what's being proposed. There are five renewal options of one year each, that would ease with a three percent annual increase if they exercise their renewal options. Couple of things here that you talked about in the workshop meeting that would need your discussion here. You talked about building a fence around the property, that there's not a specific provision in here about that. You'll need to discuss that and come to some agreement with it, and that any buildings or permanent improvements that would lead to the property would remain on the property at the end of the lease. That was another matter that you discussed that is not specifically addressed, that you will need to talk about those ones. On the insurance, on page three of nine, what we've done, and other leases, which I guess Jeff Marlowe said he'd recommend, we leave a million dollars for the landlord to send within his custody, not less than a million, for injury, a million dollars, five hundred thousand dollars to personal property. That's what you've done on other leases, but it can be whatever you would want it to be. There's no security deposit that is required, the way this is written. Of course, there's no improvements on the property right now, it's just vacant land, and they would be responsible for any excavation, site preparation, whatever they would need to make it usable for their purposes. And they would be responsible for getting any licenses and for me get some compliance with any applicable state, federal, and local laws, rules, regulations. There's a lot of other provisions in here that are standard type provisions for commercial triple net leases that don't really apply to this property, because it's unimproved, doesn't have a building on it. But if they do have a building on it, then they would apply, so there's no harm in leaving no intention. So if you have any questions, to me, you know, I'd be glad to try to answer them, but probably the best preparation for this is going here. What you have here, as I say, are pretty standard form triple net commercial lease.
Okay, is, does it meet your qualification, your certification?
Yes, I mean, in my opinion, you know, it meets the required legal form, and there's some things here that you need to question.
Okay. Sir, I'll turn the floor over. If you have any questions for us that you would like to ask, if.
I have given him a copy of my little inch ribbon file, that's what I just talked to.
Okay, just a second. Mr. Davis, when does this have to be finalized?
Well, they need it as soon as possible.
Let me ask, let me ask this. Since it looks like we've got several items that need to be discussed, do you have any problems with me referring this to building and grounds?
Oh, go ahead.
And in that way, any questions that need to be answered, you know, we'd have Joe there, we could, you know, spend more time to discuss.
That's final, unless we can get it took care of when we come back from recess.
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah, we can handle this when we come back from recess, yes.
You know, it's very simple lease, six-foot fence, everything on there, I put on there, not them.
Okay. Sir, did you have any questions?
Well, I'm Bobby Joe Rose, I'm like Mr. Davis for, it's been so helpful, we need this property. The improvements we could make right now, we need to put a bill over there, it's about a pretty much a little period where we can access it from that, and we've grabbed, we need, we're basically storage truck. But we want the option where we can fence, fence it in for security, we need to, you know, and if we decide to expand, leave it. But right now, I mean, kind of drive, we just need to put this go clean where we can use it and grab it.
Okay.
The new containers are 20 foot, 40 foot containers, and that's basically all we've made for our store.
Do you have any problem with us moving it to a committee, in that way give you more time to discuss it? Also, Mr. Coker, could you be at the Building and Grounds Committee to?
Depending on when you would have it, I mean, I've given you what I think would need to be discussed and agreed upon. I don't know of anything else.
Okay, all right, just Scotty, then Rusty, then Ralph.
Okay, can I address Mr. Coker, or who's Coker? Mr. Coker, let me ask you this question. I don't want to put you in a hardship to make any decision on this particular issue, but what I am going to ask you is this, is the question I have is, you've looked at over very thoroughly, and you don't see a lot that we have to move forward, you see, you've been in a lot of these, I know you have, this is your expertise, by the way, I know that. Do you see anything wrong about us moving forward with this, or?
I want to get this stuff next within the discretion of the commission to act on. You can do it tonight, you want to refer to, maybe you can do that too.
Okay, that's your question, Mr. Kitsch?
There are a few little things here that need to be addressed.
Well, the question, Mr. Chairman, I was going to ask him is this, Joe, sometimes I have to give you the hard question, is there any particular thing in this lease that you are concerned about?
No, it's a standard
There's a lease. Okay.
Commercial triple net.
Good. Yeah, that's, that's good for me, yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, Mr. OREC, you have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few questions, and I can direct on it, I guess, I guess at this gentleman back here.
Sure.
Any hazard waste that's going to be on that site, hazardous wastes?
No, those containers are still, there's nothing in them.
Okay, and it's just, it's just for storage?
Just for storage.
Mr. Chairman, I think this property, Mr. Davis had brought it up last week, has been sitting here vacant for years and years and years.
Thirty-five.
And Joe's fine with it, I think we need to move forward, in my opinion, just make a simple motion to, and approve this, unless there's something Joe needs to actually dig into. The fencing, I think Ralph's going to address it before the motion's made, but hey, we need to try to help the businesses that's coming in here, and there's not nobody fighting, knocking on our doors, wanting that piece of property today, so.
Okay, is that it?
It is.
Mr. Davis? Okay. Wait, what? Go.
One other fence, if you do decide to have a fence, however, on this, you'll build a fence.
Change the assumption that we'll be paying for it and putting it in. I hope we don't have to, but just if we need to, we've got that.
Okay, all the containers are going to be a lot.
The, what did you say?
When we ship them to site, wherever site that we're building out, then we ship the miners, future stuff like that, then we ship, these are just metal containers, that all we can toss that are in the warehouse, go into. And right now, honestly, we are at full capacity, I'm sure Mr. Davis would agree, we've probably got 132 containers, but I probably, in that small parcel, we've got it working.
Go, Zane, is your question?
Mr. OREC, I think we need to, I need to keep him waiting.
Gotcha. Hi, Mr. Davis, you have the?
All right, that approached me, asked about the problem. I advise that if you lease it, you take care of it, if you all need to, put a fence around it, it stays. While you're here, if you want to expand, if you want to build on the property, I brought the building up the problem, I was trying to get a free building out of it. If they want to build a building on there, for their benefit, and they walk off and leave, it belongs to the county. Now, I'm pretty sure that if they want to build a building, they ain't going to plan on walking out. But if they do build a building, they're giving us a free building.
Okay.
So, that's, it's been sitting there 35 years, growing grass, God been battling for it.
So, you'll make the motion?
I'm making a motion to.
To go ahead and approve the lease grant? Just a second. Tyler, since that's in Fifth District, you want to second it?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion by Davis, seconded by Tyler King, to go ahead, Mr. OREC.
I will say that we very seldom see this, and I appreciate Mr. Davis for sticking out and trying to get this lease done, thank you.
Thank you.
But before you go on, I'd like to be clear here, so this gentleman, they're going to have to fill in these blanks on this lease. Are you okay with insurance provisions that we talked about, the million dollars, millions and $500,000? Are you saying that they have the option to build a fence if they're experienced, or that, or that you're requiring them to build a fence again? And that the, any buildings and improvements that stay with the property, that that is, that would be a provision that would be added to this, and we need to clarify with this gentleman that, that those terms are acceptable, before he's out of office. Those are the key points here that would need. They have to need to go back to the County Commission, where you tell them.
Yes, are you, are you good with that?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I would like to add one thing, if I could. Right now, Jillico's a small town. Right now, with the warehouse, we're employing 25 feet. I mean, that don't sound like a lot, but I mean, it's a whole lot.
A lot nowadays.
It's a lot nowadays. Well, in the welding and fabrication department, which I take care of that too, we've got a lift right now, they range in pay from $25 to $40 now. So, that's pretty good, though. The warehouse employees, they start out at $40,000, and we've got eleven of those, so we've got 25 feet of. And hoping to expand, just, it's a really good thing, or I think it is, we're having a lot of things.
So, you're good with the proposal?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Dwayne, you had a question?
Did you verify with the, with the mayor what you had an issue with, mayor? You said?
I said, certainly, jobs related to the property.
Okay.
Can I make a comment, Mr. Chairman, just a comment? I commend you, I appreciate you all, and Angelico's going to be blessed, we appreciate you coming in.
All right, guys, we have a motion by Davis, seconded by King to approve the land grant, the, Joe?
One last thing here.
Yes, sir.
Is to make sure that everybody's clear that they have the option to build a fence, or that they're required to.
Their options, and option to build a building, once they, they want to build on it, they'll have to get it approved by the commission or a board, get it to be, they just can't.
They're going to make these changes in this, in this form, and they will be sending them to us by yesterday morning, if you sign. Yes, sir. Right, you're straight on that.
Again, are you good with that?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Coker, Mr. Coker, everything? Make it quick, Rusty.
I'm trying to.
They actually will pay the rent upfront, that's my understanding. Okay, pretty good. All right, guys, Ms. Nance?
Joe, what about the insurance, clear, clears that up now?
Okay, the insurance is, they're responsible for everything that happens on and around the property that's related to their activities.
Okay.
They will indemnify the county for anything that happens as a result of their activities. They would be required to carry coverage on, on their activities, that would be a minimum coverage of a million dollars.
That they would carry?
That they would carry, and a million dollars for injury to personal property, or to personal injury, and $500,000 for personal property. Now, these are minimums, I would assume, although I don't know, that this company probably has a blanket policy that covers its activities at different locations, and those numbers may very well be higher than what we get. But according to Jeff Marlowe, those are the numbers that we've used on other similar documents, and so that's why those numbers are here.
Okay. Ms. Nance, that answer your question?
Indeed, thank you.
Okay, Zach?
Do you have information with one more?
Ralph, read your motion, oh, I'm sorry, Ralph, I'll read your motion. To approve the Expedient Digital Property Lease, okay, as presented tonight. Is that correct, Mr. Davis?
Yes.
You made the motion, seconded by Tyler King. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. Sir, you have a lease.
Thank you. One more thing, I did get the approval today, the commission, I probably got a higher premium fee.
Fantastic.
CD over, I've been doing a little bit of analysis, so we'll check something over twenty-four, please, we go next time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate you guys.
Appreciate it. Here we go, Mr. Davis.
I'd like to thank Joe for all the work he's been, he's done all the work, I know the topic, but I appreciate Joe.
Well, Joe takes care of us, Joe does take care of us.
He did, Joe's done a good job.
Me, and him, I mean, we reach out to him and he's still, so ever.
I'm getting you, buddy. All right, moving on. I Ralph Davis, County Commissioner of the Fifth District, hereby submit the following motions for considerations at the County Commission meeting on February the 22nd of 2022. Motion, approve for the county to pay up to $1,080 for countertops for the clerk and master's office, with Dennis Potter to pay the balance for granite out of his personal funds. Is that your motion? Have a second, have a second, everybody going, vote, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. That passes the commission, and moving on down. I Ralph Davis, County Commissioner of the Fifth District, hereby submit the following motion for considerations at the County Commission meeting on February the 22nd of Motion to approve only weight material that the county will collect a fee for, as recommended by the Sanitation Committee, sponsored by Stan Fields, seconded by C. Baird, Charles Oak, there you go, all in favor, unopposed. Is that your motion, Ralph? Is that your motion? Have a second. Seconded by Lester. Anyone wish to change their vote?
Lisa West.
Lisa?
Lisa's second.
Yes, Lisa's second, yes. Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Davis.
Just so you all know, I've got a legal letter here from State of Tennessee, telling us we, we did not have to weigh that.
I saw that, thank you very, I, and I appreciate it, Mr. Davis, thank you very much. Okay, you have one more. I Ralph Davis, County Commissioner of the Fifth District, hereby submit the following motions for consideration at the County Commission meeting on February the 22nd of 2022. Motion to earmark $18,000 rental collection for the year from Expedient Digital to go to canopies over the compactors and/or blacktop around the compactors.
Yes, sir.
Have a second by OREC. I think that's a great idea.
Can we, can we add to the motion where it's going to start at? District one, and go in order.
Right. Okay, want that in the motion? Let it be added to the motion at District one? Rusty, you good with that?
Yes, I'm fine, anything that's done, it's, it's an improvement, it's, I sat in a meeting the other night, and this will keep the citizens out of range and train, and we've had problems with some of the places, no more cost of it, we add these two, just improve the sites for our safety.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes, motion passes. Mr. Davis, that concludes your part. Guys, before we recess, now, tonight, we kind of veered off of our guidelines and stuff a little bit, so please, let's, let's keep our comments and everything, so we can stay in order. Before, before I allow any comments, closing comments, I want to make it clear that we are recessing till March the 7th at 6:00 P.M. Mr. Kitsch, you had a question, you had a comment?
Actually, I've got an announcement to make on March 3rd, which will be next Thursday, Ways of Maintenance Committee following the Recreation with 36th Park, right?
So, we're going to have the joint meeting? Okay, just a second, sir. Rusty, you had a question or a comment?
Actually, I'm going to call me for the same night, I'm going to have a follow on the infrastructure, it's 6:30, so it'll be, as soon as it follows communications, we get this.
So, you want to keep up by there, don't you? While we're there, yes.
With the four week coming up next week, it's going down, get a chance to see you, we need to try to help clear heads, there's great money, there's fraud, and it's Thursday.
Very good. Zach, you had a question?
No, I was just saying if there's any construction next week.
Okay, guys, we stand at recess until March the 7th at 6:00 P.M. And at that time, we should have information, when you, thanks, take care of.